And welcome to the County Commission meeting on November 19th will be led in a pledge by Ken McFarlane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Reminder to silence your cellphones if you have those with, and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need a listening device, Robert here in the front row can help you with that. We'll go to routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of November 12th, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $628,732.99.
Pay the bills.
Second the bills.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The auditor's account with the county treasurer as of October 31st, 2013, and the register of deeds official revenue report of fees collected in October 2013 have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. The next item is to approve routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion?
Move routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item are notices and requests. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for project 50-215-010, replacement of existing bridge structures on the northeast corner of Del Rapids city limits.
Motion. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning, commissioners. This is basically the project that was a rebid. We're out for rebids. It's the open, excuse me, no, this is the box culvert Del Rapids that we have with the school district. And we're gonna see where we get for bids and start up next summer after school's out.
Any questions for Shannon?
Shannon, the difference in the alternates is the port in place versus the box culvert? Is that what I understand?
Correct. The cost estimates-
And they're that close?
They are. They're within ten hours.
Used to be the culverts were quite a bit cheaper, didn't they?
It's because of the size. You got more haul cost even though, and more furniture cost but less installation, whereas cast in place is more installation.
Any other questions for Shannon? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I'm assuming the motion is to-
Authorize the publish.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to authorize the publish of the bid. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
It's particular that we do, we're gonna open bids on 121 structures tomorrow.
Item number B, under notices and requests, a notice was received from the East Dakota Water Development District of a meeting on Thursday, November 21st, 2013, at 9:30 a.m. at the water reclamation plant, 4500 North Sycamore, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Now's the time for anyone who has any comments they'd like to make about any item that is not on the agenda. That's not on the agenda, you can come forward. If not, we'll go to item number 11. It's not quite 9:15, so we'll come back to that at 9:15.
Item 11 is consider a motion to accept grant awards from the state homeland security grant program in the amount of $10,000 for mass casualty equipment for a mobile morgue and $73,666.80 for portable radios and to authorize the chairman to sign the grant award documents. Lynn Young.
Commissioners Lynn Young with the emergency management. As you know, the emergency management coordinates a homeland security grant for Minnetonka County. Over the last several months, we've been working through the process with the other counties in the region to include McCook, excuse me, McCook, Minnetonka County, Lake, Moody, Lincoln, Turner, Union, and Clay. And after working through that process, Minnetonka County was awarded the $10,000 for tools to be used in the autopsy trailer, or excuse me, the mobile morgue trailer, and then radios to be split between the sheriff's office and the police department. Included within the memo is the award agreements, and they require official signatures from the county commission chairperson. So I'd be willing to answer any questions and then request a motion to authorize the chairman to enter into the agreement with the state of South Dakota.
Thank you, Lynn. Does anyone have any questions, Commissioner?
You know, the number for the radios, there's $73,666.80 is a pretty specific number. So is there a specific number of radios that that's going to-
I think it's 19.
19.
And they'll be split. The sheriff and the police department will come up with a split for those. But just like anything else, we have to come within a pretty complete budget for that. So.
Make a motion to accept the grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone else have any questions about the proposal? If not, all those in favor of signing the grant say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 12, and that is to consider a motion to allocate 100% of the proceeds of the 2013 Minnehaha County surplus property sale to the general fund, ASN 13740, or to allocate a specific portion to the highway fund, ASN 13983, with the balance going to the general fund. Auditor Bobbitts.
Good morning, Commissioner. I think Cindy just about said it all. Since 1994, I believe, you've kept all those proceeds in the general fund where the total amount is at today. Last year, you decided to peel off a little over $18,000 and give it back to DJ, and that option remains viable for you today on this matter here. So the action needed is we can either allocate 100% of the proceeds to the 2013 Minnehaha County surplus property sale to the general fund, or allocate the specific portion to the highway fund with the balance going to the general fund. DJ's share this year would be $7,720.
Thank you, Bob. Questions, Commissioner Hybarger?
No, just a comment, and that $7,720 is items that were sold that originally came out of the highway department, and that was why we would be looking at putting those funds back into the highway department.
That's correct. But I believe the statute makes it clear that you have the option to do either.
Yes, they do.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to allocate a specific amount to the highway department of $7,720 with the remaining balance going to the general fund.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's $7,720 that would go to the highway department, and the balance would go into the general fund, correct? Any questions, Commissioner Kelly?
My preference is to see the 100% go to the general fund. I think we've had a lot of extra expenses come up in this year that I think, I think the general fund needs the money more than the highway. I would, I want a lot to support this.
Yes, any comments?
Just, I think it was last year was the first time that we put money back into the highway fund, and even though the highway fund has a healthy balance, those were funds that were, came out of the highway department in the first place. Those funds were designated at that point to go towards repair of roads. And I think it's important that we continue to support the highway fund with their own monies. I totally agree with what you say, Commissioner Kelly, that we have difficulties in our general fund, but are we gonna start doing this again? And at some point, if the highway department was ever to be suffering from it, we can't take general funds and transfer them back over there.
Oh, sure.
And so I just feel like it's important that we continue to spend the money where it belongs.
Commissioner Kelly?
Question, Bob. What, how much is in the highway fund right now?
You know, I don't know that answer. I can get that for you.
Is it like six or seven million?
I think last time I saw it was somewhere around there. The thing that I would tell you is that he looks like he's gonna have over $900,000 in unanticipated revenues at the end of this year.
Other comments? Commissioner Peckus?
I'm gonna support the motion, but I do respect the position that Commissioner Kelly had, because several years ago, the position of the commission was always that any sort of money that came in, we were gonna, going to supplement our general fund balance. But, you know, in the interim since then, we had some interesting challenges when it came to try to fund, you know, a new highway department building. And it was always our understanding that the funds that we generated could go back into building a structure like that. We were all told otherwise. So with that being said, we have to find a way to try to build a potential new highway department, and that comes out of our building fund or general fund. So the reality is that, yeah, it's all supposed to go for roads, but there's more to just building roads with our highway department. We've got, you know, a structure that clearly needs to be updated, and so we're gonna have some challenges in the future. So, yeah, it can be siloed, but the state law does allow that to move some of those siloed funds when we have a surplus situation like this. So I always think we should use all the tools in our box, but I'm gonna support your motion.
You made a good case for me.
I know, sorry. I'm not voting for you.
Any other comments? Other comments? If not-
A substitute motion. We'll see what happens.
Go ahead.
I move that we, substitute motion that we move 100% of the funds into the general fund.
We have a substitute motion to put all the funds into the general fund. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second. We're back to the original motion of placing $7,720 in the highway fund with the balance to the general fund. Other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one.
Get the money transferred.
Thank you.
It's still not, yeah, we're gonna move on to item 13, is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with Infrastructure Design Group in Minnehaha County in the amount of $63,121.20 for final design phase for structures 50-060-089 and 50-063-090. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, senior project engineer in highway department. These two structures are the two structures on Highway 121 just south of the two structures that are being opened for bids tomorrow. So we'll have five miles of consecutive road with milk bridges that are posted. Again, this is the main road to the Ariel's facility.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Shannon, does this take care of all of, all four bridges then on that road? Weren't there four between-
There's four, correct. There's two being bid tomorrow. These two take care of the four. When you say take care of, this is for final design of those structures.
I understand, but once we get this project done, then the load limits will be really removed down there.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
Other comments? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract for the final design phase. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
And we still have one minute to go, so we'll go on to item 14, and that is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the Center for Family Services for Professional Medical Services at the Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Todd Cheever.
Morning, Commissioner Todd Cheever from JDC, asking that you sign a contract with the Center for Family Medicine to provide to residents to do physical exams at a cost of $77 apiece as part of our new policies that will, once we get this contract going, will be going into effect.
So anyone have any questions for Todd?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Kirsten, do you have any comment?
No comment.
I think we've already discussed the policies and procedures in detail, and this supports that already approved policy, so I think it's pretty comfortable to move ahead with this. Commissioner Hybarger?
This was just the one last piece that we didn't have completed when we approved all the rest of the policies and procedures, and we knew it was coming a couple weeks afterwards, so this is just cleaning up.
Yep. Any other comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion, oh, we did.
We did?
Yep.
Wasn't listening again. We have a motion and a second, correct? For the approval of the agreement, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Todd.
Okay, it's 9:15, so we will move on to consider a drainage permit application, number 13-64, submitted by Edward Ordall to conduct agricultural drainage on the north half of the northwest quarter and the northeast quarter, Section 23, Township 104 North, Range 52 West, Buffalo Township, Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, representing the planning department. And today, I'm bringing this item to you as the drainage board for Minnehaha County. The applicant has submitted a drainage permit request, number 13-64, and I have a brief explanation, some maps, and some pictures that I'll show you that will explain what the applicant is requesting. The applicant is Ed Ordall, and the property is located in Buffalo Township, and it is in the north half of the northwest quarter of Section 23, and which would be this area here. And then he's also requesting to clean out an existing drainage way in the northeast quarter of Section 23. Mr. Ordall lives right here, and I'll go through this for you. The notices were sent to all the downstream property owners for at least half a mile of the outlet of the proposed projects on September 5th for a hearing that was to be held on October 22nd. That meeting, the hearing on October 22nd was continued to this date, on November 19th, and there were five downstream property owners that were within one half mile that were notified. The applicant is making this request to the drainage board because two of the downstream property owners would not sign the required waiver. Those two property owners were the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Mr. Don Ordall. And Don Ordall's property is shown here on the, on this parcel here, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife is a downstream property owner between this area. I did go out to the, out to the site on November 1st, and I drove with the applicant to view all of the areas, and I took some pictures. There is a very well-defined drainage system in the northeast quarter of Section 23, and I'll show you that. The drainage in the north half of the northwest quarter is a little less defined, but nonetheless exists. And the applicant is also, was also requesting to clean out a drainage way between, between this existing slough and, or wetlands and this existing wetlands. So let's go over the pictures, then I'll show you, I'll go over my recommendation. This is the area that is in the north half of the northwest quarter. It's a little less defined, and you can see generally there is a drainage that goes through here a little bit, but once again, it's a little less defined, and this is in the north half of the northwest quarter. When you get to the, to the northeast quarter, you can see a very well-defined ditch here. There's a large, this is basically looking from the road from 247th looking south towards the Ordall Homestead. You can see the, the very well-defined ditch with the grass in it. And once again, you can see it meandering through that field. The applicant's requesting to clean out this existing ditch. This is not a request for new tile. It's simply a request to clean out and maintain this existing ditch, or waterway, grassway. Once again, here you can see the existing drainage way, and this is the start of it, which would be up in one of the offshoots. You can see the start of that drainage way. So this is a pretty wide drainage way. You can see the pickup off to the side. It's probably 30 feet wide. Once again, this is looking towards, this is the, this is on the, the south property line between Ed Ordall and Don Ordall, and this is looking north. There's a, the reason that it doesn't look like there's a ditch right there is because there's a large culvert that's buried, and I have a picture of that. This is the outlet of that culvert, and this is basically right on the property line that, between the Ed Ordall and Don Ordall property. So there, there's an existing culvert. There's a very well-maintained existing drainage way, and I'll go back to the map. Staff is recommending approval of the, there's a very existing, natural existing complex, and staff is recommending approval of, of all of the drainage work to take place in the northeast quarter, which is this area here. Staff is furthermore recommending approval of this portion of the drainage request, which leads down into the slough. However, the applicant's also requesting to do this drainage work, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has indicated that they're, they have an existing easement which precludes the applicant from doing any work in that area. Given that fact, staff is recommending that no work be done, that no work be done in the area that's shown in the yellow, because there's an easement that precludes that work. However, that the applicant could clean out the drainage way that is located right here. And U.S. Fish and Wildlife is here. They don't oppose the drainage work in, in this area, and they furthermore, I discussed this with Mr. Schultz in Madison, he said that they're not opposed to cleaning out this work here, but they are opposed to doing any drainage work here. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. The applicant is here, and there's several other people in the audience that have, that may wish to speak to this as well.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Barth, I think was first.
Scott, where on that is this culvert thing, and is it, is a culvert, is it just acting as a drain itself, or is it, is it more of a pipe, or is it under a driveway, or?
The culvert is located right here, and this is the property line. This blue line is the property line between Ed Ordall's property and Don Ordall's property, and that culvert is right at the property line.
So where's the entrance to that culvert? Is it-
Well, you can see the arrows show the general flow of the property-
Right.
And that culvert is located, I would guess it's a 20-foot culvert. It's, it's located, the end of it's up here. One end is here, and one end is basically on the property line.
So if I may, a second question. Where is that 30-foot wide grass waterway?
I'll, if I back up one picture, you can, and it's sort of hard to see, but you, that, that grass drainage way, you can see extends here. There's a little chute that comes off here. There's a little chute that comes off here and here, and that's what the applicant is requesting to clean out. That when I, when I impose the, superimpose the drainage red lines over the top of it, it sort of obscures the drainage ways, but you can see them there. Likewise, you can see, this is what the applicant is wanting to clean out right here. There's an existing little drainage way. You can see it through here like this. I'll take that back and show you this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly? Question answered. Okay. Commissioner Hybarger?
This dumps then on Mr. Don Ordall's property, and his, where does his waterway dump? I mean, does it eventually dump into a creek, or is it just continues like a waterway, like we looked at a grassy waterway all the way through Mr. Ordall's property too?
It's a grassy waterway, basically, that, that goes, it, and I met with Mr. Don Ordall as well on the first, and he showed me his property, but you sort of can see it. It sort of continues down here, and then this is actually a county highway here, and it continues on down through the Ordall, Don Ordall's property. And of course, as you move further and further down the, the waterway, it's gathering more and more water, so there's a potential for it to become more of a intermittent stream as you move further down into the drainage basin.
Where does it outlet eventually? I mean, does it mean, does it go for miles and miles and miles? Is it just a grassy land, or does it end up in a slough, or just, I'm just curious?
You know, I'm, I don't know exactly where it ends up. I didn't, didn't go all the way to the end of the property, but it just continues on through the Ordall property.
Okay. I think my question can be answered later, so thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
The applicant's here.
Yes.
And would the applicant like to make any comments or respond to any of the-
He can probably answer my question then.
Mr. Ordall, you'll need to tell us your name and address, please.
My name's Ed Ordall. 24709459.
I'm sorry, but you may have to get closer to the mic so the commissioner can hear you. Thank you.
My name's Ed Ordall. My address is 24709459 Street.
Thank you.
And that water does end up at Clear Lake.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That's the main thing I want to get across.
Are there any other comments you'd like to make about your application?
No, I just wanna clean out my ditches and live my life. It's all I wanna do.
Thank you. Anyone else that's part of the application want to speak? If not, we will go to, we will go to the people who are an opponent, if you will, or against the application, and we'll start with the USF and W if we can, since they're the first one on the list.
Okay, I can just speak briefly-
You need to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Nutella Hansen with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the project leader for the Madison Wetland Management District. And as far as what Scott had presented, he's right. The one clarification I want to make is, you know, the parts in yellow would not be authorized because the two basins are protected under U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So regardless of what the board determined today, we would, you know, make, you know, actions on whatever ended up occurring in that area, regardless of what happens here today. The red that goes and dumps that he's got onto there, we're not in objection because it does not impact our easement interest on those two areas. So it's not like we're approving, it just doesn't impact the interest on that. So that's the position that we hold. Any questions for?
My understanding is, in the presentation, the yellow portion, you have an easement on that particular-
Right. Those two basins that the yellow goes in between are protected under easement, so you cannot fill drain, burn, or level, but water going into that basin is not a violation of that term, so.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions for? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Now we'll go to the opponents. If you would come forward and identify yourself. Okay, two people moving, so you'll, go ahead.
My name is Jackie Green, and I live on 247th Street, so if you look where that yellow line goes, we live to the right of that. You can see the house on your map there. I just want to say that, you know, we have a culvert that runs directly from Ed's side of the road to our side of the road, and if they were to approve the part that is yellowed, our slough would be definitely impacted with that, and that's a big concern for us.
Understand that. I think the yellow is actually a separate item almost, in the fact that it's protected by the USF and W, so I don't think we have any jurisdiction on a federal. We'd like to control the feds, but evidently, they don't listen. Any other opponents who would like to speak? Go ahead. Thanks for your patience.
My name is Don Ordall. 24781459th Avenue, directly south of the intended party, and I have a series of pictures. Not into the slideshow so much, but to show the effect of the drainage.
Scott, I think we'll help you get them on the-
Yeah, could I? Is that something that's very doable, or?
Mm-hmm.
Let me get them all out of here. There's a property just adjacent to me that with a tile inlet that's been in there for over 100 years. over 100 years. We're lower. We're lower property. So it takes time for that to drain off, so.
Where is this picture at?
This picture would be in section 24.
We don't have a section number. What, is 248th Street?
East of the property, east of section 23.
Scott, can you go back to the original and show us with, I'm sorry, I have to switch back and forth, but it'll help us.
I guess. What I'm saying is, I'll show it further in here, that as we get more water onto me with speed, increasing the speed of it, I'm unable to let that tile drain properly. It puts more pressure on the down. If you understand law of physics, higher property is going to naturally drain onto lower. But when that does happen with, by increasing the speed, it takes more time. And this is the neighbor's property actually to the east of me. And I have another slide here. This is my property adjacent on Highway 110. And there's a culvert in the fence line going, that crosses 110.
Which one is 110? Is that 248?
Yeah. Is that 248?
Can we show more?
Please.
When were these pictures taken?
Over the course of the last number of years.
Okay. So not, not this year?
No.
Okay.
Well, that would be a dope, I guess. There's another one, less defined, but. And that's my property looking at it. The water can't get through the culvert. The culvert's been raised when the reconstruction of the highway and visiting with the contractor after getting on with the highway, we had a dispute. And he said in the end of the day, he raised the culvert a few inches. And so when the water comes very fast and he worked on upstream, it doesn't have time to cross the culvert.
Is that culvert on 248th or 459?
On the Highway 110.
Which one?
Is that 248?
That's 248.
And that culvert was raised. It's a cement culvert. In addition, frost has heaved it.
Okay.
I had a contractor look at that.
I think he's looking at this, this is the county highway right here.
Okay.
Yes. That's 248.
248.
And I think he should, the culvert that Mr. Ordall, Mr. Don Ordall's talking about is right in here.
There's two of them, but that one seems to be the one that's high.
So some of the pictures that he's showing right now are down in here.
In that area.
Okay, I'll move back.
And I have, I have two. I have three more. So it just takes more time. Takes time to get this water crossed. And it doesn't drain well. There's, as the waterway continues south, there's another pipe downstream approximately less than about a quarter of a mile. And that also was raised over the course of the last several years. I have a picture there of. Right here, it's hard to define, but it's available here. This is the neighbor to the south of me here. We've got a slide a little bit. And to the grove of trees where he's got his finger there, you see the row of pipes there, a little bit to the different. Can you see where the steel pipe is to, to my right, looking on the picture? It was replaced with a small steel pipe and raised about three feet. I don't know why they did it that way, but they did. They relifted it up in the air about three feet, put the steel pipe in and took the large cement ones out and laid them up by the row of trees. And I'm, I've got a permit to do the, to change this back, but I'm having trouble getting a contractor as it's not my property. The owner of that property's not real excited about doing anything. I've actually had two contractors agree to go down there and once they went down, looked at it, they've, they've disappeared on me here. So we were going to lower, at least lower the pipe or put the large ones back in and lower them back to where they were and clean out the ditch, all of which I have permits for downstream owners. But someone is having some words with the contractors and seems to be chasing them away. So I'd like to keep that water, keep on flowing. But I have pictures of the affected property here and there's water from there up to the highway when it rains. Here's, there's continuing pictures. This one here was, there's just a number of pictures. And it's just, it could be quite difficult when it's not my property to the south of me. He did agree to the permits and went down there and now he ain't really excited about it. I, I'm not, not looking for enemies in my life and I want to retain a friend and neighbor to the south of me, but he doesn't really want me to do anything. And he did sign the permit and I paid for it about two years ago and now he's really dragging his feet on it. So the water can't get through that raised pipe and it backs all the way up to the pictures I showed you. So it makes it quite, quite disturbing for me to continue on. I'm open to suggestions or help.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Does that pipe go under 248th Street, the county highway?
Well, the highway one is on, you know, there's one across the highway as I shared with you.
And that one's been raised?
That did get lifted up. Ray Sands confided in me as he left the job and after he had his paycheck, he said that got lifted up. He said, I got that one too high.
Well, maybe the highway department can just look at it.
And then, like I say, the one on the private property, it's on the Dennis Hotchkiss's property. He thinks it's just fine and it fills his pasture with water. But.
Are those neighbors that you're talking about, are they present to represent themselves or are you representing them?
Dennis is not present. He just has no interest in it. I'll go over and yeah, yeah. And he, he just isn't real interested in it. Yet he did sign the permit and I don't want to make him mad and.
Well, if you go dig on his property, you might.
That's what I'm afraid of here. And I started, I had a demonstrator come out to demonstrate a dirt blowing machine and I had him do a little bit of the pasture to show him what might happen, all within the guidelines of the permit. But I stated, we need to lower the culvert and clean to the south with an excavator. And like I shared with you, the permit is signed. Now he's kind of holding his hands off and so he's not real interested in doing it. So I'm locked in between and I'm getting, I showed the pictures of the water that stands on my property. And anything you do with cleaning a ditch speeds it up. If it was put in a tile perhaps and passed on through Dennis's property. And I have done some tiling on Dennis's property because my grandfather had put a 14-inch tile there 100 years ago. I put an eight inch in and I'm about 10, 15 years ago across his property, but he, he drags his feet on it and he's growing alfalfa over the tile and alfalfa roots are starting to plug the tile. So I'm kind of locked in a.
Commissioner Barth?
Actually, I was out and visited with Mr. Ordall a couple of years ago. And basically there are two issues. He believes that the culvert under the highway there is high, but also that the water draining to the south is sluggish because the neighbors there haven't cleaned out their stuff. So there's a couple of issues there. And I, I think Tom Willsey here knows some of the history and all that. But basically, this is a pretty soggy area up there. I mean, if you drive around up there, there's water all over. I guess that's the situation.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, do you have a question? I'm kind of curious. Is it all maintenance that's causing most of this? Is it your downstream maintenance? Is it backing up because, because the culvert won't, won't take it?
Yeah, that's a large portion of it.
Have you talked to the highway department at all about the culvert?
Yes.
What have they said?
The private. Tom Willsey, I'm not getting any response. I wrote a letter to Tom, Mr. Willsey here several years ago and several letters and I've got no response. But sharing back with you, more, a larger problem is the private culvert on Dennis Hotchkiss's property. Not to throw him on the table when he's not here to represent himself, a good friend and neighbor, but the, as I showed this one picture here of the steel pipe, he put the steel in, lifted it and took the large cements that were like 48 inches out and put in like a 28-inch pipe. So it's, it's very frustrating.
Don, we, Mr. Willsey's here this morning, so I think if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to hear from him also.
Certainly.
And then maybe we can break this into two pieces, just officially where the yellow is and then where the rest of the drainage pipe is, because I think they're, they're two different things from my perspective.
Thank you.
Tom, would you like to make some, or Don, I'm sorry, would you like to make any other comments?
I'm just welcome. There's some suggestions.
Thank you. Tom, would you come forward, please?
Tom Willsey from the highway department. When that road was built, the pipe here, I found out it was put in about four inches too high, higher than the previous pipe that was in there. They ma, what they did is they matched the drainage upstream and downstream with the inlet and the outlet of the pipe. It had evidently silted in from what was there previous. We found out later that there were drain tile that came in just right upstream from the pipe that were actually, if I remember correctly, they were six inches below the flow line of our pipe. We were instructed by the commission at that time to go in and put a drain tile, to plow a drain tile under our road, or bore, sorry, bore of drain tile under our road to try to alleviate that problem with the, the other drain tile. Knowing now what I know, we should have probably tied it in. We didn't tie it into the other pipe. We just left it open so it would drain everything, try to have it drain a little better. Other than that, I, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Tom? Commissioner Kelly? Was the drain tile installed?
It was there previous.
Before the, I mean, well, I mean, going on, you said something about drain tile under the road to compensate for the four inches?
Yeah. We bored a, if I remember, it was a six-inch drain tile under the road. And it was approximately a foot below the other, the pipe that was there. The area, actually the area south of that pipe, Mr. Hotchkiss cleaned that out after we had built the road in that area. Cleaned that drainage out a little bit and deepened it.
So the drain tile is taking the drain tile?
It was, that was the plan. That was what we were instructed to do and that's what the plan was. I went out there a little while ago. I could not find that drain tile, but I know it was put in.
So it's a maintenance issue?
Pardon?
It's a maintenance issue.
As, yes.
Commissioner?
This may be a maintenance issue then of the highway department. Mr. Booth, he is here too. I wondered if he has any comments on that? Do you know anything about this or is this better left to Tom? Tom's been dealing with it.
This is something I've dealt with for 10 years.
So I'm just wondering if we need to, as a county, be cleaning that out? And did you start to say that? And I, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth that those, that drain tile should have been connected to the drain tile on the south? And if it isn't, then maybe we need to do that.
That's something I think we should do. Yeah, that should have been done, man.
It sounds that way.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm wondering, Mr. Booth, maybe you could step to the mic too? If this is something that could be assessed and figure out if we are at fault here?
We can certainly look into it. I'll have to talk with Tom and find out the history, the whole history.
Yeah.
If it's a pipe that we installed or we had installed, it would be considered a public utility and the highway department would be responsible for maintenance of it.
Thank you, DJ. Commissioner Barth?
Tom, didn't Gordy Swanson write Mr. Ordall a letter on this issue?
I believe so, because the commission was the one that was acting on and that's who gave us the direction to do this.
Do we know offhand what that might have said and?
I can't. I never saw the letter. I was just informed of it from Bob Meister.
Any other questions for the county highway department? Thank you for being here, by the way. Any questions for Mr. Ordall or Mr. Ordall, I guess? Commissioner Heiburger, do you have a question?
No.
Anyone else like to make any comments this morning? Or any follow-up conversation? Otherwise, we will move Don Ordall, if you would like to come back, that's fine.
Comment that the pipe that's installed, drilled under the road is hooked up into the existing drain tile. It is connected.
Could you find the pipe? I mean, it sounded like.
I could find it, yeah.
Okay.
I could, we connected it up. It did get connected.
Okay, thank you.
It just, it's totally insufficient. It's just a, a small speck in the grand scheme of things. The surface drainage needs to go with surface waterway.
Okay.
And it's a maintenance issue downstream.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Edward, if you'd like to come back, that's fine.
We're not done yet.
We're not quite done yet.
Okay.
We got the meat to cut yet. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Kirsten, do you think we need to have an action on the first piece of that or can we make some assumptions or is that a bad idea?
I think you can take one action to adopt planning and zoning staff's recommendation that the yellow part be left out. I don't think you need to split it up. I believe it's been brought as one application and you can define the parameters of that as you see fit, so.
Is the USF and W comfortable with that? Okay. Everybody understand that we will not address the yellow part other than in a motion on the total project?
Does that have to be a part of the total motion? I don't quite understand, Kirsten, sorry.
If, if the commission wishes to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation, what that basically does is it approves the red lined portions, as I understand the recommendation, and leaves out the yellow portion that is subject to the federal easement.
Everybody comfortable with that? If so, we're looking for action, please.
I would make a motion to approve the planning and zoning's recommendations with the highway department taking a look at the drainage culvert on the south side of Mr. Ed Ordall's property.
Don Ordall.
Don Ordall.
Is there a second? I'll second, Bill. We have a motion and a second to approve the application of Mr. Ed Ordall and the highway department looking at the drainage issue to the south end of the property. Is there any other comments or questions?
Okay, so just to be clear, we're not doing the Yellow River, but we are going to be working on the River Don. Because what we've got here is a huge reservoir of water.
Right. I think that's exactly what we're doing. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. I think we'll need a roll call vote, Cindy.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion unanimously passes to approve the drainage permit. We're on to the next item. Thank you for coming to this conversation.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign an extension of detoxification, facility operation agreement and healthcare services agreement between Minnehaha County and Correct Care Solutions through February 28th, 2014. Ken McFarlane.
Morning commissioners. As you know, our two contracts for both the detox and the inmate medical services with Correct Care Solutions expire at the end of this year. And in anticipation of that, we've got requests for proposals out for new contracts for the 2014 year out right now. And those proposals are due, they were originally to be due November 22nd and we've extended that timeframe to December 6th, when those proposals are due. In order to accommodate that new schedule and that CCS has agreed to, to extend their current contracts until February 28th to allow for a successful transition and/or current contracts until February 28th, to allow for a successful transition and/or switch over to implement the new changes that we've come up with, with the infirmary and sobering center and modified detox program concept. So under the terms of this, both contracts will remain in full force and effect until February 28, 2014, with all of the conditions of the present contract to remain in, in place, with the exception of the adjustment of the monthly management fee paid to CCS. And as you can see, the detox monthly management fee, based on the 2.9% CPI adjustment, would go from $6,730 to $6,925 for the month. And the inmate medical is adjusted from $16,330 to $16,803. And then otherwise, again, all other aspects of the contract will remain in effect, and that until the end of February.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Commissioner?
Yeah, I had a question.
Do you want to ask it?
I, I, explain to me this, two contracts being in place for two months. Are we going to have, because obviously it won't be CCS.
Well, we don't know that.
Yes.
We don't know that for sure at this juncture, Commissioner.
Okay. Hypothetically, if we have a new contractor and the old contractor, are they both running on the facility? I don't follow.
Right now, we have two separate contracts. Both of them are with CCS.
Oh, okay.
Both of them currently expire at the end of December. And that, and what we're doing is extending both contracts with CCS until the end of February. So any potential new buyer, or new provider, or whatever, their contract will start March 1.
Okay.
Depending on what we have proposed.
I was reading that wrong. Okay.
You comfortable now?
Yeah.
Good. We have a motion and a second for the chairman to sign the extension to February 28th of the detox and the healthcare services agreement. Correct? Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Thank you, Ken.
Item 16 is Minnehawke County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Kelly?
The diversity committee met yesterday, a quarterly meeting. But a couple of interesting things came out. They, the, I don't know, whatever age, the federal agency that controls all this, EOC, is that be right? Apparently, it has some new requirements coming out February or sometime. And they're going to require that we survey and, or have a census of veterans and disabled employed in the county. We've always tracked the vets, but we, you know, we can't force anybody to tell us either way. And so we don't figure our numbers are very accurate. I think right now they have like 26 out of our, what, 500 and some employees. And, but the benchmark is, the benchmarks they've set are 7% for vets and 8% for disabled. Ironically, in the vets, you can't, you can't count the reserves of the guard and who's been fighting the wars. It, you know, it hasn't been the regular army. It's been an awful lot of, of call-ups. But for some reason, really, they got to be regular army or air force active duty. When we accomplish all this, which is going to take a lot of time, a lot of our manpower, we then don't send it in, but we simply put it on a shelf. And so this sits on a shelf in the HR office. And if they come to audit us, we better have it, and then we pull it down and show it to them. And there's no penalties if you don't meet these. However, they will say to us, but you can't have federal contracts. But we've got a lot of federal contracts in the county. So to me, it's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. But, you know, because it's, it's almost hard to measure it. But it's just another example of the pressure that gets, keeps putting on in human resources as far as time. It takes about a week of a, a full-time week to just develop the, help me with the plan, the.
Affirmative action plan.
Pardon?
The affirmative action.
Yeah, yeah, the affirmative action plan. And now this will be in addition to that. And I don't know if that's updated every year, every two years, but it's more an example of the little things we're seeing that we don't really see in the bureaucrat, a blindless bureaucrat, nameless bureaucrat in Washington, and setting these things up. So it's something to keep in mind, I think, when, when we're looking at, like the HR budget, that there's a lot of things that Kerry will mention to us that don't seem apparent early on.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? If not, is there any new business?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to make a comment about Senate Bill 70.
Okay.
You know, going forward, obviously, housing for people being released from the penitentiary is going to be an issue. And, you know, I don't see us taking any steps, really, you know, the fantasy of four in a room, whatever. We need to find ways to not only house people, but we have to find jobs for people, jobs where they can make a living, where they don't have to, you know, manufacture or sell drugs in order to make ends meet. And right now, there's not a lot of jobs. And at the same time, we, we, we have a hard time finding regular people jobs, including veterans. And to that point, I think I saw where the post office even has a declining number of veterans working at the post office these days. I mean, that's a, that's always been a pretty darn good job. And, you know, we, we have all this crime-free housing and stuff where people don't get to stay. I thought in the August, did a Jill Carlson had a interesting article talking about how each of us has committed something which, for, you know, with God's grace, they didn't catch me. I'm sure you're all innocent. But the point being, though, that none of us are perfect, and we expect these people who did get caught to somehow be perfect when they get out. Warren Buffett said, every, every saint has a past and every sinner has a future. But we've got to be able to put that through in our community to make Senate Bill 70 work. Either that, or we're really going to be in trouble.
Thank you, Jeff. Any comments from Commissioner Kelly?
I'd like to disagree with something Jeff said. He said we got an obligation to find them jobs. I think this country, we have to provide the opportunity. But I think when we get in the business of finding people work because, because of something they did, I mean, there was a reason they were in the penitentiary and got released, it's our obligation to have some, have the opportunities available. But not, I don't believe it's our obligation or responsibility to find jobs for them.
Mr. Chair? Yes. You know, I, I understand your point there, Dick. But if we don't, then they're going to be in our jail, and they're going to be committing crimes in our community. And, you know.
But we're solving all, you know, we're solving all the problems.
By liking them up?
Well, I mean, if, don't they have an obligation to go find a job themselves?
Absolutely. Who will hire them?
Well, I don't know. Why'd they commit the crime in the first place?
So unemployed ex-convicts running around in our community is not in any way the responsibility of the community or the government entities that will.
Find them work? I, I believe that the, the opportunity should be there, not the, not the, otherwise, we're taking care of them in cradle to grave. We've been feeding them and medicating them and everything else for five years, and now they're out, and we're, we're.
I understand your point, Commissioner. I think it's a good one. But I, I, you know, $30,000 a year to keep them in jail.
I think we need to move on.
Yeah.
Any old business? Any old business? If not, we'd like to go into executive session for personnel litigation and contract issues.
Full spread.
Full spread.
Second.
Triple threat. We have a motion and a second to go into exec session for personnel litigation and contract. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. We need about five minutes.